All right, I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order. If you all please rise and join in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before court calls are rolled, I just wanted to welcome her in her new position. We've got quite a meeting here planned tonight, so we'll learn under fire there. So go ahead and please call her roll.
Mayor March?
Here.
Trustee Bowden? Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Moravka?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
And Trustee Sterba?
Here.
All right, public comments.
Hey Nelson, I would like to make a recommendation to the board. If you could have a, like a once a month meeting at Cornerstone, like on a Saturday, just a meet and greet for the residents. That's it. Take it into consideration and come on out and talk to people.
Good. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Anybody else?
Hi, Rick Hanson. I just wanted to say thank you for the wonderful Christmas parade village. And thank you for putting Hanson's dugout back on the agenda.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to consent agenda, we have the minutes from the November 28th, 2022 regular village board meeting. Payroll accounts payable. So we've got a couple payrolls on here. One for the paid period ending 11/26/2022 in the amount of $70,005,298. And then for the paid period ending 12/5/2022, which is a Teamsters holiday pay of $34,478,42. And then accounts payable. The general fund $68,234.06 and Business Felt and District Fund $27,257.75 for a total of $95,491.81. And then we also have our village board meeting dates for 2023. As you all know, we meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. I think it would be prudent if we just take off the December 25th meeting. Christmas falls on a Monday next year. I also would recommend that we take out the meeting at the end of November because it falls after Thanksgiving. And this year it was, it really didn't, you know, nobody's in the office from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so the agenda's got to get out early. So it wasn't a whole lot. If we need to have a meeting, we can always go ahead and have a special meeting then. So I would say that we approve those meeting dates without that meeting, the second meeting in November and the second meeting in December.
Can we motion that?
Second.
Okay. This is for consent agenda. And it was moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sterba.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to staff and committee reports. Trustee Jones, did you have a report on, you had a public works meeting a while ago. Did you have anything to report on that?
Well, we were discussing disposing of some old equipment. Gonna take care of that. We discussed possible purchase of some new equipment. We discussed our tree program for the upcoming year. We discussed personnel, possible needs in the future.
Anything else, Nick?
I think that was it.
Those were the major things.
Okay. Angie, do you have a report for Aqua?
I do, yep. So I know I reported on the water tower for a few months there, but the painting is finally complete and the water tower is back in use. There is some restoration still that needs to be done. I think it's, a lot of it's yard restoration that we will get done this year. We're gonna try to have it all completely done this year. So we're gonna stay on top of that. So if there's any questions that come up in regards to it, let me know, but we will do our best to get that done this year. And then I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas. And if there's any questions that come up, you know, we, our call center will be open and we'll have the after hours open. And one of the managers is always on call. I myself take a week of on-call. So if there are questions that come up throughout the holiday, you know, it seems like it's the kind of those times where emergencies come up, please feel free to reach out to us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, eternal question.
No.
News from EPA or anything?
I wish I could say yes for. It'd be a good holiday event.
Okay.
Maybe next time, right?
You're right, yes, yes.
Thanks, Angie.
Sure, thank you.
Our public works manager, Bob, put a note in the packet. Basically talking about the parking lot on Railroad Street. That's substantially done. There will be a punch list of things that need attention. There's lights that still need to be installed and the parking blocks need to be installed. He just wanted to report that he's, you know, starting on the budget process. They're doing some training with the crew. And obviously they're getting their plows ready for the inevitable snow. And that's it. Let's see, what other reports from the chief? Nick, I don't know if you want to give a report for Christmas in the village. Obviously it was a very successful event. And I just want to commend you and rest of the committee and Tammy Cower especially for putting on a great event. So I don't know if you have anything else you want to report on that?
No, that is a, it was a bigger turnout than I expected and everyone suspected, especially with the weather we got dealt. And it was really, we were happy to see this, so we're hoping that it keeps growing as it is. And I do believe that the date for next year will be the ninth. So I'm hoping that next year we can try doing the same thing. Maybe, I think we're looking to add a little bit of extra to it and hopefully every year we can grill from the year prior.
Great. Yeah, thank you, it was a great event. I think that about covers our reports for today. Onto my comments. Couple of things, I just wanted to kind of go over the demolition of 206 North Second Street. There seems to be a little confusion on exactly what the village is doing. We do not own that property. We were able to get an order for demolition because that property was in such poor condition. It was a health hazard. There were people squatting in there with no heat and no water. It's been a property that people have been constantly talking to me and other board members about, you know, fixing up, you know, trying to do something with that. So the board is going to be using business development district funds to demolish that building. That business development district tax was put in a few years ago, really for this, you know, to be able to fix up our business district. So I think it's a wise use of the funds. We will be putting a lien on their property so that it's possible the village may eventually get that money back. But at the very least, we'll be taking down a health hazard and ISO in the community. I want to thank, you know, Troy and Public Works and Iroquois Paving for getting that Railroad Street parking lot substantially completed. It was nice that it was available for the Christmas in the village event. It was, it was pretty full that day. And so it was good to see that it was online for that. It makes us see what the lights look like. And, you know, once we have the landscaping done, we'll probably get some trees planted in there in the spring. And I think it's, you know, it's gonna, it really adds a lot to the downtown. So I appreciate the effort that all the board you guys put together and, you know, committed to doing that. So I really appreciate that. Couple of things coming up on the calendar. Chief Mort's retirement party is on December 30th at the Legion. It's from four to seven, right? So please put that on your calendars. We'd like to have a big crowd wish Chief well on his retirement. Village stickers go on sale beginning of January. And the deadline for getting those is February 15th, correct?
Correct.
I think that's about it for my comments. So moving on to old business, we have an ordinance approving the issuance of Class A on-premises consumption and M2 entertainment performance license for Rick Hanson doing business as Hanson's dugout. So this would be ordinance 2227. We've discussed this in the past. We were waiting on Mr. Hanson closing on this property. We do have the documents that he closed. So everything seems to be in order for those applications. So entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sims?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, onto new business. Item A is an ordinance accepting the final term sheet with respect to the issuance of $3,555,000 in bond, general obligation bonds for alternative revenue source series 2022. This would be ordinance 2229. So this is kind of a culmination of what we've been going through all fall with getting these bonds issued. These are going to be used for road improvements on 88th Avenue and Piatton Wilmington Road. And so this would be the, we've got a bank that has given us terms for this and knows where to pack it, I believe. And so, yeah, move forward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Jones.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, item B is presentation of the 2021-2022 annual financial statements for the year ended March 2022. This was our audit. And I believe we have presentations from our audit firm. Welcome.
Sure do, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Brad Porter and I'm here on behalf of Lauderbach and Amon, the village's new audit firm. As a principal, that helps to oversee a lot of our municipal client base. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And before I go any further, I'd like to give a special thank you to Amy and Marie and the team for all of their efforts. I'll be the first to admit, I know a first-year audit process is quite a grueling task in terms of some pickups along the way. It requires a great deal of patience. So we've, I know the team has really enjoyed working with everybody here. So thank you for that. At the conclusion of each audit process, we issue three documents, two of which can be found in front of you here this evening. I've also issued a, what is known as a SaaS 114 letter. It's a three-page letter that Amy has a paper copy of in front of her, but no need to pull that up. In accordance with Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114, we are required to state whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties with management throughout our audit process. And I'm happy to report that in the body of that letter, you will find no such disagreements noted, so. Now, I know there's a lot of material in the two documents that we've issued here. I know we've got a busy agenda, so I will keep this very short and brief, I promise. I just wanted to point out a couple of key intangible pieces within your audit documents, given this is the first year with us. So if you could turn with me to page one. You should find our Lauderbach and Amon letterhead. Believe it or not, page one is the most important page within your audit document itself. This is what we call our independent auditor's report. In addition to stating your responsibility as management of the village, that is ultimately to provide a clean set of financial statements for us to work off of as your auditors, we go on to state what our responsibility is, and that is to generate an opinion on the financial statements that have been provided to us. I'm happy to report for the fiscal year ended March 31st, 2022, we have issued what is known as an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion that any entity in the governmental space can be issued. So congratulations. Turning to page five. I tend to like to point this section out here. This is what we call our management discussion and analysis. I alluded to the fact that sometimes the financial statements themselves are quite difficult to understand and interpret with all the different columns we have going for different types of activities. So this section here is really going to do a good job of breaking things down into narrative format. So there's financial highlights, charts, graphs, things that are a little bit easier to understand than the financial statements themselves. So just a couple of quick financial highlights for fiscal year 2022. Your overall net position of the village had increased by about $190,000. Now that encompasses all of the respective funds of the village. So the general fund specifically had a planned deficit this year. We came in at about $274,000 reduction in our overall fund balance, which is 2.3%. So again, that was planned and budgeted for. Now, let's move on to the management letter, which is going to be the second of the two documents. In a first year, it's very important that we are not only, you know, just signing the stamp of opinion on an audit, but we're also providing value. And this is really the means of us being able to do that. So the primary purpose of our management letter is going to be to convey any internal control recommendations, any best practices, or any upcoming accounting standards that may have some degree of an impact on your organization. So for fiscal year 2022, we had five current recommendations. The first two current recommendations are purely procedural. These are for upcoming accounting pronouncements that will be in effect for fiscal year 2023. I can't stress enough that we'll be working with the team on what necessary entries or the financial statement impacts will look like. So that is with regards to leases and IT service arrangements. I know I won't bore you guys by going into any details on those. So moving on to capital asset policy. Again, part of our job in year one is to obtain any potential financial-related policies that you currently have on file. The one that we noted that the village did not have for fiscal year 2022 was a capital asset policy, which is going to set useful lives, capitalization thresholds, and some of the information pertaining to what GASB requires to be in place. So we have provided sample policies, I hope, at this point. And if not, we certainly have a plethora of them across our municipal base. So we're happy to work with you on some of those specifics. The fourth item here was collateralization of deposits for police pension funds. Ultimately, the FDIC will secure up to $250,000 of your account balances held at any one given institution. It is then your, ultimately the village's responsibility to go out and secure collateralization for any balances in excess of that. So we did note that the supplemental collateralization in place did not necessarily cover the full balance for fiscal year 2022, but it did cover the vast majority of it. So we wanted to disclose that in the management letter. And lastly was a funds over budget. We realize things happen throughout the course of the year. So our TIF 1 fund had exceeded our internal working budget by $28,000 for fiscal year 2022. So we are required to disclose any instance in which that occurs. Now, the last comment I wanted to make, I had alluded to the fact that in year one, our job is to provide value outside the scope of the opinion itself. So one thing I did want to note, we issue a number of certificate of achievement awards for a lot of our municipal clients. I'm not sure if that has been discussed internally at this point, but it would certainly be something that would be a recommendation of ours and something that we would be happy to assist the village work moving forward. So the certificate of achievement award is issued by the Government Finance Officers Association and is really the highest form of financial reporting excellence that any municipal government can be issued. So in addition to the internal benefits that that provides, you're going to have 10 years of historical information provided within your audit document. You know, that historical trend information can aid in decision-making, budget setting, et cetera. It also helps kind of from an external purview as well. If you're going out to issue debt, as we have on the agenda here today. A lot of that information that they're going to be looking for is already going to be found within the supplemental schedules that get added. So there's an additional time burden in year one. You know, there's no way around that. But beyond that, you've already accumulated nine of the 10 years of rolling historical data. So there's really not much in terms of any burden beyond year one. So there's a small fee for the setup. And then moving forward, it doesn't change your audit fee or anything like that. So, you know, we're not doing that just in our best interest. We're really encouraging the village to consider that moving forward, so. That concludes my audit coverage. I'm happy to field any questions, comments, or concerns.
Are we in good shape?
Yes, sure are.
Page 68, 69. Did you talk about the police pension fund?
Sure.
So just so that I understand the, you know, we usually talk about percent funded pension plans. So is that the number that we see in the third lineup that starts out at 21.6%?
Yep, exactly. So ultimately how GASB 68 works is you have a pool of funds set aside for your police pension fund. And you have an actuarially determined liability under GASB 67, 68. The difference between the total assets that you have and the total calculated liability is where that net pension liability comes from. So from a positive standpoint, I know since inception of GASB 67, 68, you were at 21.6. You're all the way up to 41.86 at this point. So it's certainly trending in the right direction.
Good. Any other questions from the board about financial documents? You know, I just want to compliment Emery and Amy and the accountant, the audit firm. You know, like I said, going through this with a new audit firm. And we transitioned from a different treasurer. It was, you know, kind of a difficult process. And everybody did a great job in getting this done. And as you can see, I think, you know, we're in pretty good shape. And I just appreciate all the work you guys did on this. All right, with that, entertain a motion. Do we have to, I guess, do we accept that or?
You don't have to, but you can make a motion to accept the financial report.
Yeah, so let's do that. So entertain a motion to accept the presentation of the 2021-2022 annual financial statements.
Motion.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Jones.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Happy holidays.
All right, next up is an ordinance for the levying and assessing of the 2022 taxes for the village of Piatton, Will County, Illinois. This would be ordinance 22-30. And I'll turn this over to our financial consultant, Emery.
Good evening. So this is your 2022 property tax levy that will be collected by the village in 2023. You can kind of see here it's a little bit higher than the prior year. I believe your 2021 levy started at about $600,000 and we're recommending $619,000. It is a slight increase. Based upon current estimates of the assessed value of the entire village, the property tax rate for the individual taxpayer should remain fairly consistent. We're hoping that the amount that they, the county clerk's office gave us is accurate. So the rate should pretty much stay the same. The village as a whole is about 8% of the overall tax bill that a resident pays, which means that eight cents of every dollar comes to the village. That's really low. That's very healthy. So I think that the village has done a great job of keeping their property tax levy as low as possible. We did reallocate the total levy kind of across line items this year. And you can kind of see that in the detailed table that's in the agenda item. It really makes it more, kind of match better where the money is actually spent. So like your FICA and your IMRF levies, it's more what you're actually spending on those dollar amounts as opposed to just budgeting kind of a flat amount each year or levying a flat amount each year. So it's consistent with prior years, just allocated a little bit differently. It's under the 5% truth in taxation limit that you have. So we didn't have to have a public hearing. We didn't have to publish a notice in the paper. That's really it. We'll take this ordinance and we'll file it with the county clerk's office by the last Tuesday in December. They'll process the levy and then, like I said, you collect the funds in 2023. Any questions?
So just, I just want to make it clear to everyone because sometimes these levies are, for this whole process, a little confusing. So the way that, one of the revenue sources that we get is from property taxes. And like Emery said, the county gives us a number for what the assessed evaluation is. And luckily, that number has been going up. And so we try to capture some of that increase. We're limited by legislation to increasing our levy by 5% or what the consumer price index is.
Which for this year was also 5%.
So this is the first year in a long time that we've been able to try to capture more than just a couple percent extra of our increased valuation. So what that means is the pot is getting bigger. And we try to get some of that extra, but the people's, the rate that people pay doesn't get higher. It actually stays the same or it's actually gone down a little bit over the years. So when it's reported that a community is, you know, raising their levy by 5%, that doesn't mean that people are going to pay 5% more of their tax bill. That means that we're just trying to capture that extra value that's occurred because everybody's real estate value's gone up or people have built homes or businesses. So I hope that helps clear it up. So that, so that's kind of where we're at. We always try to capture the maximum amount that we're allowed because our costs go up just like everybody else's costs go up. You know, we have to pay higher salaries. We have to pay the paving company more every year. You know, everybody's costs go up. So if we don't try to capture that extra, we end up, you know, in trouble eventually. So anyway.
So just really quick, just to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying.
Yeah.
So like you had said, for every dollar, we get like eight cents or whatnot. So what you're saying is that if we get, if we try to get this levy and we get, say, 12 cents off that dollar, is that kind of what it's like? No?
No, no, it stays at eight cents.
We still get eight cents, okay.
Yeah. It's just because there's more out there to tax.
Okay.
Everybody's paying that 8% on their increased amount.
But the taxes won't go up significantly?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 22-30 for levying assessing of 2022 taxes for the village of Piatton.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Jones.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, so next item B is a res-
I need two minutes.
Oh, okay. Is a resolution allocating 2022 tax levy to individual funds of the village. Property tax extension limitation law as amended. So now that we've levied the amount that we want, this resolution will allocate those amounts to certain funds, correct?
Yeah, I believe what the resolution does is that if for some reason the county has to reduce the amount of the levy that the board approved, they'll reduce it out of certain line items and not other ones. So I believe they'll hit all of the tax cap line items and they will not reduce the corporate or police protection line items of the levy.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Fair motion.
Fair motion.
Your second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Sluse, resolution 22-R16.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on, it's the item E, fiscal year 2024 budget kickoff presentation. So then our financial consultant put together a nice packet here. So Amory, if you want to kind of go over everything?
Thanks. So if we just want to kind of look to the first page, this is really just a very, very high level review of where the village's 2023 to date. These are numbers through November 30th of the fiscal year, which is eight months into the fiscal year. Probably the biggest thing that I just kind of want to point out is a lot of the tax receipts that you receive are trending higher than budgeted. The village has pretty much collected its whole levy for this year because the due dates are June and September. But sales tax, use tax, state income tax, they're all trending higher than where you would be. If we're through eight months of the budget, you'd be at 66% of your revenues, and they're all trending higher than that. Vehicle sticker license revenues will be received in January and February. So none of that is in these numbers yet. We did get our second tranche of ARPA funds, so we got an additional $324,000-ish. We have spent some of that on a project this year, but there's still some funds remaining for future capital projects. There was also a $3.2 million grant, which is kind of that big blue stick you see there on that chart. That grant was not realized. We were not awarded that grant, but we did receive another grant. That's a reimbursement grant, so we won't get all of that money at once. We will incur the expenses, and then we send a bill to the state, and the state will send us the revenue. So that's why that kind of looks a little bit awkward there. Just, like I said, your sales tax are about 72% of the amount that was budgeted for the year. So that's over and above, a little bit over and above what the budget would be to date. If you flip to the next slide, this shows you kind of your expenditures through November. Each department is really trending on target with their budgets. Once again, that planning and zoning department at the end looks a little bit weird because that blue bar was the spending of that $3.2 million grant that we didn't get. What I do, would like to note though, and it's just something to think about as we go into the next budget process, the 2023 budget actually planned for about a $1.2 million drawdown on your general fund fund balance. And while right now the village's fund balance is very strong, I think it's about 64% of your operating expenditures, which is awesome, that kind of a drawdown each year obviously is not sustainable. So it's just something to kind of think about as we move forward. Flip to the next slide. This is just a couple other funds that I thought was kind of worth talking about. The motor fuel tax fund is where we charge our road program every year. Revenues in that fund are trending about even, and that's the tax we collect on motor fuel that's sold within the state. We did get our last Build Illinois Fund, Funds Tranche, so we got the $45,000 this year. We do still have some of that on deposit that we have not spent completely too, so we can use that for future capital projects. The business development fund, just like the general fund sales tax, are trending higher than what the budget would be through eight months. So there's another good sign that sales in the village are doing well. I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions, just slow me down. I tend to talk fast. So that's really just kind of a review of where we are for 2023. I think all in all, the budget's doing fine. Departments are within their budgets. Our revenues are exceeding the budget a little bit. So all in all, I think we're doing okay. I'm not going to read through this whole slide. The next slide is really just the 2024 budget schedule. It might be a little bit different than what the village has historically done. Amy and I kind of worked together just with what I was used to doing as a finance director and what you guys have always kind of done. So this is the schedule that we're going to try to keep to. This is the budget kickoff meeting that we're having tonight. By Friday, we're going to be handing out the budget packets to all the departments heads for them to put their operating budget together. We're kind of redesigning the capital budget structure a little bit to make it a little bit more user friendly of a report. We'll be meeting with the board at the end of June, or I'm sorry, at the end of January to go over that. By Friday, February 3rd, we're hoping to give the board a full copy of the proposed 2024 budget, which would include all operating revenues, all operating expenditures, as well as all capital expenditures. And then we would formally present that to the Administrative Oversight Committee on February 14th. Our plan is to approve the budget at the first meeting in March, if all goes well and we stay on target, so that we're not kind of up against that March 31st deadline. Just some thoughts for the 2024 budget planning process. Like I said, right now, fund balance in the general fund is great. That's a very, very healthy fund balance. I think GASB or GAAP standards, GFOA standards are at least 25 to 30%. So the village is doing really well. But we won't, you know, we don't, we don't want to continue to do that drawdown on our fund balance every year. We will utilize the bond issue that we talked about earlier. From what I understand, the village is going to utilize general fund monies to make the interest payments for the first couple of years of those bonds, so that we didn't have to do the cap I, the capitalized interest. That'll save the village a lot of money in the long run. So that's something that we'll have to build into the 2024 budget. It's about $140,000 for 2024 and about $148,000 for 2025. These, those cost our TIF eligible, so we'll be able to, and we'll work with the board to decide exactly how to do it. We could probably set that up as a loan that the general fund is making to the TIF fund, and then the general fund will be able to recoup those dollars eventually as TIF income comes into that TIF fund. So we'll probably set it up that way. Jump in, jump ahead, no, currently no new revenue sources planned for 2024. Amy and I were discussing yesterday, from what I understand, the water franchise fee should most likely increase over time as the new water source is available and their rates go, their higher rates go into effect. Our liquor licenses go up each year, and then we've got the video gaming receipts from the new travel center that hopefully will start coming in in 12 to 16 months. So just some other items to kind of think about for the budget for next year. There's some personnel changes that I know Amy's been working with the board, and some of these are taking effect in fiscal year 2023, and some of them will be new in 2024. I mentioned a little bit earlier, there are some capital funding sources that we already kind of have in the bank. I would say we have remaining ARPA funds of about $270,000, and then the remaining Build Illinois funds of about $140,000. So that's about, you know, a little bit over $400,000 of capital funding that we already have in-house that we'll be able to utilize in 2024 going forward. The last page, Brad was just up here and kind of talked about some changing the way we do our financial statements and actually issuing the audit report that we can submit to GFOA for the award. I recommend that we do the same thing with the budget document. We'll put together a GFOA budget document, we'll submit it to GFOA for the budget award. It's kind of just like Brad said, it's something, not only internally is it good for us to have, it really kind of explains your spending in a lot of detail, gives you a lot of graphical presentation of data, but also having that GFOA award on our, you know, on our hands or whatever, really to the outside world is a good thing, especially when you're issuing bonds or looking for a rating, getting a new bank to come in-house, anything like that, it's really good to have that. So we're going to, I think, plan to put that together and submit it to GFOA.
Yep.
So let's, Amy, do you have anything?
Well, GFOA, if you don't know, so it's Government Finance Officers Association. There's an Illinois chapter, just in case you, you know, we have a lot of acronyms in government.
As a county mayor, it's, you know.
And yeah, I think it's, to me, it would be a really nice, and not only the benefits Anne Marie just mentioned, but I think it shows a transparency level to the community that I would like to see.
You talked about the ARPA funds, you know, those are, those are limited, as much you can spend those on. Kind of decided to use those on stormwater sewer projects. So I, I know we don't have a whole lot there. I think we're going to have to, we talked about maybe doing Conrad Street, but that project's turning out to be a lot more expensive than we thought. So I don't know if there's, you know, we talked to Troy and Bob about, you know, how we can maybe use some of that money in a less expensive project, or maybe do the phase, you know, one of that project or something. So that's something we'll be working on. The Build Illinois Grant Funds, we talked about applying towards the continued development of the south side of West Street, rebuilding that from Corning to Peatown Wilmington Road. So that's a project that's kind of, we've been working on for a long time, and it's, you know, probably won't get done until, you know, 2028 or 2029. It's just when the funds are available that we apply for from the government league. So, but there is some preliminary engineering work that needs to be done there, so we can use those funds on that, right? Right, so. Plan staffing, I know, you know, we, the board has talked about hiring a full-time building and kind of planning director. So I assume that's something that we'll want to build into the budget. You know, we like the work that you're doing, so we'd like to make sure that we're, we have funds available to keep you on board. One thing that I personally like to see is starting in 2024, possibly trying to get rid of the vehicle sticker revenue. We don't really get a whole lot of money from that, and it is, it's difficult to, the amount of work that the staff puts into that, I don't know if it's really worth it in the long run. So, I mean, it's in the budget this year. We're still going to, like I said, we're still selling vehicle stickers this year, but it's just something we might want to talk about going forward, so. Anybody else have any suggestions or anything? Just kind of getting the start of this, anything's, everything's fair game at the beginning, and, you know, we see where the numbers come out when we got a proposed budget, and then start making hard decisions after that, so.
Get any direction you guys could give us as we're kind of putting documents together is what we're looking for, so.
Are you happy with working with us?
I am. I'm enjoying it.
I'd like to see if we'd be able to hire another footwork employee.
Yes.
Something I'd like to see.
And police officer.
Yeah.
Anything else? Good. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item F, recommendation to hire Kate White as part-time clerical in the administrative department effective December 19th, 2022. Is Kate here?
Hi.
Oh, hi. Pleased to meet you.
Pleased to meet you. Should I stand up?
Yeah, you're good. Yeah, so Amy, it would be Kate, and recommended that we hire her to help out in the front. Since we have Stacy taking over the clerical duties, we need somebody else to do parts of her job that she was doing. So, yeah, entertain a motion to-
What were our hours? So 20 hours a week, and we're working on a schedule just to be flexible and make sure we have coverage up front. Kate has some financial background, and she's got some HR background. She's gone to university to study human resources, so I think she'll be a real asset to us in the front. So less than 20, up to 20 hours no more. I'll motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sterba.
Trustee Val, trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item G, this would be resolution 22R17. Resolution to accept the contract for landscape architect services by Upland, designed for Phase Two of the downtown redevelopment plan. So this was brought to the downtown ad hoc committee a few months ago. Kind of discussed it, and we talked on about, you know, trying to trim their fees a little bit. They did cut their fees by a few thousand dollars. But basically, they're going to be providing the services for all the stuff that Robinson Engineering does not typically do. So Robinson is great at designing, you know, streets and storm sewers and curbs and gutters and sidewalks, but if we want the downtown development to be something a little different, we definitely need to have landscape architects involved. So again, I should have mentioned this before, but since trustee Jones, trustee Hudson own property downtown, they have to recuse themselves from this discussion. Questions or comments? Okay.
I'll motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
May I?
Yes. All right. Next, we are going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body. We will take some action after this. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sterba.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.